Welcome to City Council Meeting of October the 9th. And thank you for all being in attendance. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you read the roll call, please?
Mr. Shyland.
Present.
Mr. Moore.
Present.
Ms. Reclu. Mr. Shiverdecker.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Here.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
And Mr. Braun.
Here.
Seven council members present, one absent.
Thank you very much. If you all rise with me, Pastor Bruce Williamson is with us this evening. He's gonna lead us in the invitation. And then if you lead us in the pledge upon the coronation of that, thank you.
I sure will. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, I want to begin with the folks that are still cleaning up after Hurricane Florence in the east two weeks ago. We had family and neighbors and friends there who went and came safely. And I thank you, Lord, for that and for those that remained. For the recovery which will be months, if not years, we just pray your blessings on those who were displaced and whose lives were broken. In addition, I pray for another tropical storm that's gonna be in Panama City at midnight. I pray as well for the safety of those that may be in harms way there, as well as in the heartland of Missouri. There's gonna be storms and high winds all across the state of Missouri in the next four or five hours. I pray for life and limb and property, Lord, to be spared in that order. I lift up, Lord, the community that we live in and when I see how easily a firefighter can be hurt, as was Tim Hayes on Friday. That's why I never pray a prayer without praying for our police officers, firefighters, and first responders. Their work is always at risk and dangerous. And I thank you, Lord, for a miracle for Tim. He had another good day today, and we call that a miracle. I pray, Lord, for the work that will be done in this session tonight, for the discussions that are held and any decisions that would be made. As far as our city family is concerned, I'll continue, Lord, to pray for Chief Myers, Mayor Benton, Mr. and Mrs. Reclu, Mr. Shyland, Mr. Moore, and anyone else who ought be remembered as part of the city family who needs your daily love and care. We all thank you for your love, your grace, and your strength, and we pray your blessings on our lives and our service to you in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Pleasure.
I'm just gonna come down to this podium for this next session, or this segment. Well, I've been mayor. Folks said, "Well, I bet you really have a lot of negatives in your job," you know? And sure, there's a few. But let me tell you, it's been way outweighed by the positives in our, in our community. We have a great community. And tonight is one of those illustrations. And I've, uh, I probably have the date here somewhere, but some, a few months ago in August, there was a fire over on Circle Drive. And of course, number one, we're very proud of our firemen who responded to that fire and did a super job of getting under control and limiting the amount of damage. But during that fire, at the beg, very beginning, there was a young man who really performed a heroic act. Uh, gosh, you know, I, I'm not sure how it acted if I woke up and fire alarms were going off and smoke was in the air and so forth. This young man came forward and thought first of his family and took action. And I think that we need to really say, hey, a great big thank you from the community and from, from those that, that love us, or love it. The, uh, one of the items that, first off, that really brought this to my attention, as mayor, you know, you, you kinda come in and you, you first, my first thing every morning is go get a cup of coffee. They know not to, to talk to me too much till I get a cup of coffee. But anyway, I had a, I had a call there that I need to call back, Mr. Greg Thomas. And, uh, so I did. I returned that phone call and Greg was saying, "You know, Mayor, I think there ought to be something done for this young man. He's, he's, he's saved his family and he's really an outstanding young person in our community." And, uh, so I thought, wow, what do we do? You know? But yes, I, I could agree to a hundred percent with Mr. Thomas. And, uh, gosh, I want to thank you publicly, Greg, for, for giving us a call and bringing this to my attention. Uh, I have to admit, probably at that time, I really didn't even know there was a fire on Circle Drive. Uh, but I may have heard it on the news on the way in someplace. But that, that would be about the limit to my knowledge. So, anyway, I, I called Chief Kofelt and said, "What in the world can we do, uh, for, for this young man?" And, uh, Chief, uh, came back just real quick, as, as he always does. He's, he's well organized and saves my bacon all the time. So, anyway, uh, we're, we're just real pleased and, and proud again to, this evening, uh, to recognize Landon Gray. Landon, would you please come on up? And if you're, if that's your dad or someone, you'd like to bring them with you, come ahead. It's good to meet you, young man.
Nice to meet you, too.
Thank you for your, what you did. I want to begin by presenting this proclamation from the city to you. And, uh, it's on behalf of the city council and myself and citizens of Fulton. And, uh, it's in recognition and appreciation, whereas Landon Gray, age thirteen, a resident of Fulton, Missouri, heroically and honorably saved the lives of his family members during a house fire on August the eighth, twenty eighteen. And whereas Landon was awoken by a smoke detector in his home and bravely proceeded to various rooms to alert his mother, Amy, and his two siblings, Carter, age three, and Allison, age two. And whereas Landon assisted each member from the burning home to safety, ensuring everyone had made it out of the structure. And now therefore, I Leroy D. Benton, Mayor of City of Fulton, City of Fulton, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of our community, extend our sincere and grateful appreciation to Landon Gray and his heroic acts of bravery in a time of crisis and witness where, where, whereof I hereunto set my hand, cause to be affixed, this official seal of the city of, of Fulton, Missouri, this night and day of our trip. Thank you again, Landon. Let me do that, too. Also, Chief Kofelt is invited, uh, and honored for you here, and I'll let you enjoy it.
Landon, as the Fulton Fire Department, as we talked about it, we would like to do something for you, too. Uh, we got a plaque for you for your room. Uh, that says, "Presented to Landon Gray for your heroic and brave reactions taken on the evening of August the eighth, two thousand and eighteen. With your quick thinking and remaining calm in a dangerous situation, you saved many lives at night. Strong work from the Fulton Fire Department." Today that Mayor Benton contacted me, I said, "Well, I'm gonna contact, uh, Penning, our state fire marshal, and I was wanting to know if he might be able to bring someone up to, uh, present a word to you as well." And he said that he would like to do so. And we, and what, you?
Landon, it's nice to meet you. And you also, you know, I was thinking when Chief called me and, uh, he shared the information about the situation, uh, I've been in the fire service for thirty-four years, serving the public of West Plains. I don't know if anybody knows where West Plains is. But that is my hometown, and I serve that community as a police and firefighter. And I got to thinking back over my fire career, and, uh, you've actually done more than me. Saved a lot. And you actually saved three lives. And looking back over my career, I've, you know, had a situation where I've actually saved a couple people out of harm's, hard way and out of burning structures. So you're to be commended for your actions and, you know, what the mayor read there and Chief, uh, I've got some words here, and I want to present this to you from me as the state fire marshal and the fire service of Missouri for what you've done. And it's very, be commended for that thinking. Like the mayor said, being woken up in the middle of the night and the fire alarm going off, uh, that's, that's very nice of what you've done there. For your quick action and alerting your family, uh, safely and preventing potential injury or possibly loss of life, your bravery and heroic action is appreciated and respected by all and signed by myself as the state fire marshal. So I'd like to present that to you. And also, uh, this is our patch that we wear on our, our uniforms across the state. And then we have challenge calls. I thought it'd be appropriate that I present you three because of, you know, your mother and your two siblings that you helped save that night. So with that, I want to present the different points here for you also. And there we go. Congratulations. Thanks for what you did, so I'm very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Les Hudson wears a yellow one, so. My little foot and ankle once. I think I was old enough.
Are you a scout? Are you a boy scout? The boy scouts give out.
He's still out here.
But thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you for that. Appreciate it. We'll now move on. Beginning of our council meeting, we set aside a time for those who are not already on the agenda and who would like to address the council about a concern they have within the city, uh, to come and, and, uh, tell us your concern. Uh, council will not interact with you, but again, may take it up later, the, the topic up later in the meeting. Uh, but anyway, it's, all we do is ask that you limit your comments to five minutes and give us your name and address. At this time, is there anyone present who'd like to, uh, come forward and address the council over a concern they have within the city? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing. Let me find my agenda here. Uh, and under the, uh, the public hearing, the public hearing is, uh, part of our agenda this evening, and it's to, uh, consider the rezoning of a particular partial land at the seven eleven Nickel Street and. Uh, the, uh, during the public hearing, the format will be as follows. The hearing, uh, of course, is now is declared open. There will be three calls issued for anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the matter being considered, and then I'll issue three calls for anyone who would like to support the, the matter being considered. So at this time, I'll issue the first call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of this proposed rezoning? Please come forward. Seeing no one coming forward, is there anyone who'd, I'll issue the second call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of this proposed rezoning?
Mr. Mayor, Les Hudson, nine oh three Bradley Lane, and I'm here representing the group of folks in the Methodist Church. We'd like to see this rezoned.
Could you pull that back to you there, Les? Thank, thank you.
We, we would like to see this rezoned to commercial zone so we can sell it, so we can at least gain our money back. If it isn't rezoned, we probably couldn't sell it enough for the debt. We hope we have all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted and that we've done everything that we can do to please everyone on the council. We'd like to see it advanced on to, to get it rezoned as a commercial property.
Thank you. Anyone else coming forward? Seeing no one at this time, I'll issue the second call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this proposed rezoning? Again, seeing no one coming forward, I'll issue the third and final call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of this proposed rezoning? Again, no one's coming forward. I will now issue three calls for anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed rezoning. First call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this proposed rezoning?
Mr. Mayor, Les Hudson, nine oh three Bradley Lane, and I'm here representing the group of folks in the Methodist Church. We'd like to see this rezoned.
Could you pull that back to you there, Les? Thank, thank you.
We, we would like to see this rezoned to a commercial zone so we can sell it, so we can at least gain our money back. If it isn't rezoned, we probably couldn't sell it enough for the debt. We hope we have all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted and that we've done everything that we can do to please everyone on the council. We'd like to see it advanced on to, to get it rezoned as a commercial property.
Thank you. Anyone else coming forward? Seeing no one at this time, I'll issue the second call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this proposed rezoning? Good evening.
Good evening. I feel like I need to, as the pastor of the church. I'm Rebecca Dungarpeak. Good evening. Nine oh seven Lyle Street, uh, here in Fulton. Thank you for the work that you've done on this and for your service to the city and for bearing with us, uh, in this process. We appreciate that. We would like to ask for this rezoning and encourage you to vote yes for it, uh, so that we can help that property to continue its historic use as commercial property as well, and allows us to be good stewards of that property. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else coming forward, on the second call, I'll issue the third and final call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed rezoning? Seeing no one calling, coming forward, I'll, uh, now declare this hearing closed and we'll move back to our agenda. Our next item is the approval of the consent agenda. And consent agenda is an agenda that helps us streamline some, some of our regular type of duties that we have to do. Uh, and tonight, on the consent agenda, are, is listed the, uh, a request by, uh, the Westminster College for their homecoming parade, which will be Friday, October the nineteenth. A request, uh, again, from Westminster's Pre-Healthcare Professionals Association for a five K run, which they will have on October the twenty-sixth, which is also a Friday. And then we also have listed the appointment of Brian Warren to the Tourism Board as the city county representative. Uh, Warren's term will expire on twelve thirty-one, twenty nineteen. And also the appointment of Andrea Ravello to the Tourism Board, uh, as the city's representative, and she will, her term will retire, uh, expire on twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. Is there any item that any council person would like to remove from the consent agenda?
I have just a question. I don't want to remove it. What's the parade route for the Westminster's Homecoming?
Um, it is in your packet. And let me see if I can pull it up here really quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Um, I will say, even though we're not really discussing it, since we're on the consent agenda, um, originally, they wanted to go down to Fourth Street, and that was obviously gonna be, we weren't able to accommodate that. So with talking, um, they were able to talk with Chief Myers and I, um, and they're gonna be bumping up to Fifth Street, similar to what the, the high school's homecoming parade did. That's really the only noticeable change.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve. Further discussion of motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? No. Very good. Thank you. Consent agenda stands approved. We'll now move on to unfinished business and, uh, help me refresh my memory. Is this on the table?
I don't think it was, it wasn't ever officially tabled. Um, we just kind of moved it along for some more information.
We now will consider a, uh, application for, uh, historic property, which is located at four ten East Eighth Street. It's open for discussion or questions or, and our motion.
I will say that I had several conversations with David McDaniel on this particular house, and, and according to what he's been told, is there's supposed to be, the gentleman is going to do a movie and a documentary, basically, would like to do a movie and documentary through the remodeling stage, and, and, um, David and I had a very good conversation about it, so, uh, I think it's.
Okay.
Could only take somebody at their word.
Yeah, very good. That's all we can ever do. Uh, any other questions or comments?
So do we still have an ordinance that we're gonna read to, to do a final approval on this?
No, this is just a simple motion, second, and vote.
Okay.
I have noticed that, uh, since that period of time, they have been up there and cleaned up the brush around the building and, and started cleaning up around the house itself. They haven't done anything to the house, but the property itself, they have.
It's gonna be quite a project, quite a challenge.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion. We go ahead and approve the designation of the four ten East Eighth Street as a historical property.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion and a second to, uh, approve four ten East Eighth Street as a historic property. Is there any further discussion in the motion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? No. Okay, very good. And I'll come into new business. Uh, we started this discussion, I had to cut you off, uh, but feel free to pick right back up. Parks and Rec, Recreation. Um, did I cut you off, Clay? Did you have a chance to finish?
Uh, I'll just add a few things.
Okay.
If there's more questions, I'll, I'll be happy to ask, answer those. Um, again, the Park Board's recommendation is that, um, simply we just continue with the process that was approved and started back in June, um, with the idea that we'll, uh, we'll get to February and we'll put both projects out for bid and, um, and have a number that we can, we can look at. Um, I think it, in the last four months, we've, we've made more progress with this architect than we've made on, in the, in the previous year and a half. So we're making good progress. If, if we stop now, we will have wasted a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. If we move forward, there's gonna be some additional expense, probably maybe two hundred thousand dollars more. But even at the end, and we put it out for bid, if we don't build a community center, we still have the designs, we still have the construction documents. If we have to wait a year, if we have to wait two years, we can still use those documents. So it's, it's not money wasted if we move forward. What the money does, it gives the council, it gives the Park Board, um, a, a price tag. It, it tells us what we can afford, uh, what we can't afford, and then we can make an informed decision. So I think that's, that's all we're asking. We're not, Park Board's not asking the council to decide on one project or the other. We're just asking you to take it to the point where we put it out for bid and you have some more information.
Any questions? Mr. Moore.
I have a question. Let's say you're designing ball field, you said it's pretty much up to the point where we could go for a bid on it.
Yeah, I mean, it, it needs a little engineering work, but it's, it's very, very close, yes.
So we already know what's in our pocket of money on this side. So if you go out for bid on both of them together, is one of these designed to where you're planning on, and you're gonna build the second one? Or we know when we get the bids on both of them, we're not gonna be able to build one of them, we're gonna have to still choose which one we build?
Hey, the, the ideal thing is that you can afford both. That, that's, that's the perfect world. Will you be able to? We don't know. We're, we're gonna work on getting those costs as low as we can to try to build both. That, that's the goal. That's what the Park Board wants to do. Can we make it happen? We don't know yet. Um, so we're, we're gonna look at things. We're building in options. We're building in alternates. So if we get to a point where, okay, maybe we just wanna do a baseball complex or a, a community center in four fields instead of six fields. Or maybe we wanna start two fields and do the community center and then add a field each year. So there's, there's options. And present it to the council once we have a definite number.
Clay, what stops you from putting the ball fields out for bid now?
I, I don't think anything. I don't think anything. Other than what I mentioned earlier, that there might be some, some options to combine the projects, various parts of the projects, like the dirt work.
Well, I mean, we could deal with that when we decide to award and decide to move forward. I'm just wondering, why not go ahead? I mean, we could have bids backed by the time we put the other one out.
To compare, so if we don't have the rec center money.
I think the purpose is still to build both.
I think we might, we might as, if, if there's nothing stopping us from putting the ball fields out for bid, let's put them out for bid. I mean, it's not costing us anything. Documents are ready.
And that would be your decision, if that's, if that's what you'd wish to do.
Clay, is this the fourplex?
Well, we were talking about six fields at this time, yeah.
But the two, the two projects to get, I mean, one of them, according to your paper, was five to seven million and, uh, ballparks, three million, two to, two and a half to three million. So, I mean, we, we kinda semi-know where we're looking. Even if you put them both out together, looks, it looks as if we're still gonna make a choice.
Well, we, I know we started out talking in the four million, five million dollar range, maybe six million dollar range for both facilities. And now we're almost up to ten million dollars for both. I don't think we can go that far.
Let, let, let me draw your attention to, to page five. I'll, I'll just touch on one of these options and, and, and this'll kind of maybe put it into perspective numbers-wise. Page five, the yellow option, option one, um, if you look at it, I want to draw your attention to the, to the last yellow highlighted line, okay? That option is building a community center and six baseball fields. If we did that, based on what we project the operating cost and operating revenue to be, what we project the sales tax revenue to be, that would cost the city sixty-nine, sixty-nine, seventy thousand dollars a year. Okay? I'm not here asking the city to, to subsidize that. That's not what I'm here. I'm just here to point out that we're kind of close. We're kind of close to being break even. We're kind of close to adding two facilities that won't be a burden on the city financially.
We spent half that a year at the pool.
And that, that's a very good point. And, and again, I'm not asking the city or the council to pick that. I know what you're saying.
I'm acknowledging what you're saying is we're, we're close, you know? Seventy thousand dollars is a whole lot of money, and I'm just acknowledging the, the close part is, this is money that we, we spend on other projects already, so it's, I'm agreeing with you. It's what I'm trying to do.
And I think, and we haven't, and like I said earlier, we haven't went in depth into how we can save some. into how we can save some money. Now, what, what kind of city labor can we provide? What, we talked a little bit last night about seeing if we can get some, uh, Missouri Tech, I guess it's called now, getting some students to come over and do the dirt work. I know they do those, those types of projects, for student projects. So there's a lot of options out there. There's grants, like Mr. Braun talked about. We, we can start asking for donations, asking for grants. We can do a lot of that stuff and try to get that cost where it's not $70,000 a year, where it's maybe $2,000 a year. So, again, I don't want to go into all these options, because they're all kind of detailed, and they're, they're complicated. I just wanted to point out that it's, we aren't so far out there that it's not a doable project.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Clay. Okay, you, you say that all these have potential to make some money. Well, if we build option one, you're already handicapping the community center, because you don't, it's no banquet room, so that's an income that's a little bit lost. I mean, so, then you say, I don't know, as a citizen, probably be, I'm a little older than you, I won't go into that. But we built a junior high school that was sold on that premise. It's made to add on to, and you're going to graduate from that in 1978. Well, that was a story. I mean, it was 20 years later that it was built on to, and kept adding and piecing it, and that's why it had all of its leak problem. This is just my opinion, and I'm, you know, you the director, Dave administration, and I always, Mr. Johnson, I always don't agree on buying things, but for once, I'm going to go back to Mr. Johnson. Build the baseball fields, do like Mr. Stone, put it out for bid, and I'm firm to wait to see what happens with the Rice Hall, if it takes. If you talk to the citizens, say, hey, do you want a cheap one, or do you want a nice community center? It's going to be two or three years. Just bear with us, we're building the project. I'm the one who went out and campaigned for the park tax. I don't think I want you coming to ask me for a donation to help me build this, because I am, uh, going to be on budget. And that's just my opinion.
Well, no offense, Steve, but I'm not going to ask you. I mean, we're going to ask companies, you know.
But I think that we should, we went for a tax, and I think we should stay, we build what we can build with that tax.
I agree with Steve.
And, and that's the point we're trying to get you to, see what, see what that number is.
I still think we need to move forward with the, with the rec center plan. You've got to have something to go on when it's all said and done. If you have all the construction plans and everything else, we're 174,000 into it now, so that's just going to go away if you don't continue forward with it. And when you, and when you do, do decide to build the rec center, you're going to have to come up with 174,000 again, plus the other money to finish it out. That doesn't make sense to me, to not continue down that, that track and finish it, no matter what you decide to do with the ball fields.
I agree.
And if, if you're looking to choose, I think another thing you have to consider is that if you do the ball field complex, you probably never do the community center, because the community center can't be phased in. It's kind of a, you've got to have a big chunk of it there. If you do the community center, there's more likelihood that you could phase in a ball complex. And I'm not saying that in defense of either one, I just think that's, that's probably more of a reality of how you could approach it, if, if you wanted to do a phased-in approach.
So you're, so what you're saying is that your recommendation would be not to do either project till we can do them both. Is that what you're saying?
No.
Yes, you did.
I'm not making a recommendation. The Park Board's recommendation is...
I know you're not making a recommendation, but your idea is to, that, I mean, you said if we do one, we won't do the other. So you're, so you're kind of...
I will say that. As a council member now, and as a citizen when we built this tax, and as a former Park Board member, we discussed doing all of this. And I think we need to get there. We need to bid the ball fields, all six. We need to spend the additional $170,000 and get these construction documents done, and we need to bid this community center as it's designed already, and see where we're at. What is it going to cost us? What can we do? Where can we cut costs? Where can we do a little city work to, to clear the, the dirt? Where can we maximize our efforts? And we need to do them both. Right now, the thought is, we're going to have to subsidize all of this stuff at about $70,000 a year. Can we get that down to 10? We might until we do all of this. And what we promised as citizens of this town is we were going to raise $400,000 a year in tax dollars in order to give them a baseball complex, softball complex, give them updated ball fields that everybody in this town's going to be able to use, and we might be able to make a little money off of, and give them a community center that we desperately need in this community. If you're asking for a vote tonight, my motion is move forward, get the construction documents, put both of these out to bid, and let's see where we're at come February. Because that's what we promised.
We're, we're talking a lot about guessing. We guess it's going to cost this, we guess it's going to cost that. Like I said earlier, we guessed it was going to cost five mil, four million, five million dollars to build both facilities, or to build just the rec center. Now we're up to six, seven, eight.
Because we're still guessing.
Right, right. I think we need, I think we need semi-hard numbers, and then we can make a decision.
But wouldn't we have hard numbers in February?
Yeah.
Right, right.
But only if we do this. Only if we put both of these out, spend another $175,000 and get to February, where we were hoping to be a year and a half ago.
I second moving forward.
You know, by the way, I still want a new poll.
Do you have a motion? Do you have a motion and a second to continue both projects forward to bid?
Okay, super, thank you.
Uh-huh.
I think there's a lot of stuff in that thing that we're making a pretty quick decision on tonight.
I don't disagree.
But, but to, to sit here and read through that and comprehend it all, it looks like me, we're, we're doing this awful quick. Well, it takes me longer to understand it than 10 minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to table this until our next meeting.
That's what I'd rather say.
Very good. Table takes precedent over the previous motion. So we'll vote on that motion first.
Councilman Vaughn, was that a second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So can we discuss the tabling?
Clay, isn't that what you wanted to do anyway?
I mean, it's, I'd like the council to look, look at this information. I mean, I'd like them to have an opportunity to look at it. From, from a timing standpoint, with where we are with the architects, we are already into the second phase. So we are, we're paying for that phase.
They haven't finished the design yet.
Yes, we're, we're in that. We owe them the money for that. We're not out any money if we continue two weeks or four weeks. We'll just continue the process like we've been doing, and, and we'll bring back more information.
Can we discuss the tabling?
Don't think discussion. The table.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
Looking at this paperwork, I could spend three weeks on this thing, and my answer would be, we don't build either, any of them, because we don't have enough information to make a decision. If we say, let's go ahead and get the cost estimates that are fairly close, because they're bid, then we have a better chance of making a good discuss, or good decision on what we want to do. If we table it, what good is that?
Which one are we making a, a decision on? Option one, two, three?
No, not, none of them. That we wait, we continue on with the design, get the bid, the, both projects out for bid in February. And then when we have the good numbers, we can make an educated, informed decision. I mean, I'm not going to make a decision off this thing.
And as engaged as I am about getting it done, I'm all for tabling it, because they're still in the design phase from the architects. We can't even tell them today, please move forward with construction documents, because they're not done with the design, right? So tabling it two weeks or four weeks isn't going to, that's not going to slow anything down with the, with the community center, right?
Well, let me add this to it. It, I think we're at this point, because we're at a point where we're talking about spending that 20, 30, 40,000 on engineering services.
But they can't do that until they finish the design, right? We still have to have our design documents.
They, they need part of that as they start with the design, because they got to know where to put the, the building on the property.
Okay, that's a different piece of information.
Yes, that, that, they need...
Taking it out, adding, adding cost for an engineering firm to finish the design is different than what I heard earlier. Not, I'm not going to say it's what you said earlier, I'm going to say it's what I heard earlier. What I heard earlier was, we needed the engineering firm to do the construction documents, not the design.
If I said that, I was incorrect.
Well, I'm saying that's what I heard.
The architect will do the construction documents. They need information from the engineering firms to get to that point and be...
They do site analysis, or soil analysis.
For the construction documents, not for the design.
I, I might defer to Kyle on that.
I, I guess, somebody please, if, if we go to page two, we've got design development with a price tag on here that says we've already paid for it. So you're saying they can't get their...
I believe in order for them to finalize their design, they're going to need, uh, to have technical work done, and, uh, so they can do a structural analysis of what needs to be done, uh, to finalize the design, as far as the footings, um, that kind of thing. So, I believe in the engineering work will have to be done to finalize the, the design, so it can go to construction documentation.
Okay.
So it needs to be done before. That helps you?
And I'm, I'm not happy with that answer now, because I thought we'd already paid for the design phase of this project, and now we're having to pay another 20 to 45,000 to finish the design, the design phase.
Right. Well, again, like I mentioned earlier...
And maybe I've got, I've got very solid lines between these phases.
Yeah.
And maybe I need a blurred line between design and construction. I've got a solid line between design and construction, and we can't get to the end of design without this additional money.
You, you will need the additional money.
It's, it's anticipated the civil engineering is going to be another 29,000. The topographic surveying is going to be 2,500, and the geotech is 17,5. That's 49,000.
And we basically have to pay that. Otherwise, the architects can't get us past design, and we've already approved them to get us past it, to get us to design.
And it, and again, it's not, that, that wasn't included in the contract, and, and we intentionally didn't include it in there, because...
We thought we were going to be able to do it anyhow.
Yeah, we, and we were going to explore that, that idea, and they think, they think these are pretty good prices. They think their price isn't, we probably can't get if we went out and asked someone to do it. So, yes, that's, that's kind of where we're at, why we got to this point, because we are talking about spending additional money. And Mr. Johnson might be able to...
But we're going to have to spend it, or else we're not going to have a design. We're not even going to have a design if we don't spend the money.
You're correct. You're correct.
I'm pretty confused. So, the ball field ain't ready to be bid?
That, that has nothing to do with the ball field at all. That is strictly for the community center. That's strictly for the community.
We're still talking about the community center.
Yeah.
So 49,000 just for more for the, just to get them ready for the design, for the community center?
Well, we're, we're, we're in the design phase. We're in the, the planning and design phase. The engineering part of it is what they need to, as Kyle said, to get them through the design phase. And, and I'm sure some of that information will carry over into the construction document phase, too. But, no, it's, it, it's separate from the contract, so that would probably be something, I assume, that the council would have to approve that, that spending.
And so, but the ball field is ready for bid?
It's very close. I, I don't think it's going to take us any or a lot of additional expense. I think if there's any additional expenses, it's going to be minimal to get that ready.
So which of these, with the design, you can add, subtract when it gets to a price you don't like, or which one are you going to submit if we go ahead with this project?
The, which...
Without the banquet room, with the banquet room?
I, I think what, what presented to, is priced out per option, and, and the council can decide is, is having that banquet room more beneficial than the cost.
Or, or even the field house.
Yeah. And, and we got into a little discussion about the field house, where we could get rid of big chunks of it, but it doesn't necessarily, let's say the total project cost is $130 a square feet. Just because we get rid of a certain 5,000 square feet, doesn't mean we're saving $130 a square foot, because each part is differently priced. Big open space, like a big basketball arena, is cheaper square footage than a room like this, that has a lot more detail to it.
So, so if we...
I'm in favor of tabling this.
Can I, can I ask one question? Originally, did we not talk in the $310,000 range for the, through the construction phase for the rec center? Is that not what we discussed?
Yeah.
So, right now, even with the two that have been paid and the 144,000, that's only 270,000.
We had 50,000. We paid another consultant firm and got us nowhere. Then that money's already gone.
And then we've got another 50,000 in added design work, right?
Yeah. As I mentioned earlier, you're looking at probably 144 plus that 49, which is 3, 193,000.
So, so if we table this, if we table our decision, what, where are we going to be in two or three weeks? Are we just going to have a chance to make the decision where we...
Hopefully, we'll have more information that we can make the decision on. I'm also going to ask the finance staff to come up with projections on how much $400,000 we'll support in finance, because I think we need to look at that side of the equation also. We can, we can do it all here on one building, so. Okay, so let's go ahead. Steve, I'll give you one question real quick, and then we're going to vote.
I, well, I'm going to go with the table, but I'm still interested in the Rice Hall building. But can, instead of the next council meeting, I don't, not a special council, special meeting, but I think this is longer than what we can probably do time in a council meeting. I think we should have a special meeting, have a discussion with this.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not here to...
He, he thinks it's going to take a little bit longer.
I agree with that.
Or even just schedule a meeting for us to meet with.
I agree with that.
Let's, let's get closer to two weeks, and we'll see where we are. Then, then, then we can get back to you, okay? Is everyone ready for the vote now on tabling this item?
Yes.
All those in favor of tabling the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? No. Okay, very good. Motion is tabled. Thank you, Clay.
Thank you, Clay.
Okay, let's move on to item B, budgetary discussion. Another easy topic. Okay.
You want to lead this, or Robert?
We have in front of you, uh, the first draft. As we've said every time we've talked about the budget, it's, it's a, it's a document in progress. Even the document that you have in front of us has been updated and modified some over the past, since the council meeting, this work session we had last Tuesday night. We have made several changes to it. I guess, let's, far as deep, oh, let's, let's talk about the document that's in front of us, and we'll, we'll talk about some of the changes we've done, okay? Now, the document you have in front of us, you know, it has a capital section in the back. That is the capital approvals that each of the various departments have planned, scheduled, and are included in the budget, okay? There is about $280,000 in the budget for raises. We have, there are some unknowns for next year. If you, what pages are they on? Pages one and two, which is on pages... Um, we have, there are some unknowns for next year. Uh, if you, what pages am I on? Pages one and two, which is on pages sixteen, sixteen and seventeen. You can see the general fund is, is still in the black. All the funds are in the black with the exception of the golf course. Overall, the budget at grand total shows the city being at a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars to the good at the end of the year. To the good means positive cash flow citywide as a budget.
Bill, on that item, can someone explain to me the graph on page thirteen? I wanna make sure that our budget surplus appears to be an error in sales tax revenue projections.
Page thirteen is an error in sales back tax projections. Um, we have discussed that. It is being corrected as we speak.
Does whatever number is on that graph, is that number represented anywhere else in the budget or is it only an error in that graph?
The two thousand nineteen would, would be the correct number. What, what you see is probably not so much an error this year, but as an error last year, the, it appears that the half cent, arch and rec, construction tax, tax, not included for the three months of two thousand seventeen or the full year of two thousand eighteen.
Okay. Revenues are truly projected to be at about four point one million dollars and that's an accurate number?
Yes.
For two thousand nineteen?
Yes.
And so that's represented by, what, the approximate eight hundred thousand dollars per year that went into...
Per half cent.
Per half cent for the stormwater and parks and rec.
That, that's included in there. But also, we also have a half cent, uh, general fund, a half cent capital improvements and a half cent transportation. So it's five.
So just to repeat, the, the error in the graph is the two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen number, not the two thousand nineteen number.
That is my belief at this moment, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Just easy to have a surplus of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars when you jump your graph by a million dollars. When you increase your revenues by a million, it's easy to have a surplus.
Okay, any other questions, Bill?
I certainly would like to see, and I, and I'll do, this is not really the time, but I really got a lot out of our retreat that we had and I would like to see us do another retreat on this for some of these questions that might come up in the budget before the neck, before we read it again. I mean, I got a lot out of that and I thought it was very constructive when we did it.
So you'd like to have another evening meeting?
Yes.
Beside the council?
Yes, I would.
Anyone else doing, anyone else there?
I wouldn't mind one.
Yeah, that's fine, man.
Someone got a date?
Steve said another meeting for the parks and rec issue, so...
Maybe we can do them both.
Well, we did take a lot of time in, in the, in the retreat to, to go over some other items and spent not a ton of time on the budget and, and I mean, I think that's a plus to, to be able to spend time on this and maybe the parks board.
John, I think he just wants some more pizza.
You know what? I don't even like pizza, honestly.
I don't know. Joey was good.
I'm not a big pizza person, but...
Okay. We'll now do pizza.
No, we're, we're okay. I can bring a cheeseburger.
Hey, Bill, just, it sounds like you guys have already answered this, but I just wanna ask it from my mind. For twenty, the way the budget is set right now, anticipating the two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the salaries, we are anticipating having a, a hundred thousand dollars for expenses. Is that...
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's why, that's fine. Okay.
Very good. Okay, we'll, uh, we'll email and communicate with you. We'll set, we'll set a date.
Thank you.
Tomorrow and, uh, we'll see when we can get together then, okay?
Thank you.
Due to, I'm just gonna close with this, due to the number of changes that we have made between this version that you have in front of you and the version you will receive next, we will reprint a hard copy for everyone. Depending on the date that you choose for the extra meeting, um, I'm gonna tell you it's gonna be ninety-nine point nine percent done. Okay? By the time you, by the next time you get a hard copy, it's gonna be done, pretty right, right there knocking on the door.
Also, we're noting, we are, we're scheduled to do our, our first reading at our next council meeting and we also have our budget hearing at that meeting as well. So we'll see how that all fits with an additional meeting between now and then.
Very good. We'll move on to bud, uh, council concerns. Uh, this time in the meeting, when you have anything else that you'd like to bring the scenario on the agenda, uh, just ask for a show of hands who has, would like, Ballard?
When we were at our retreat, uh, in September, the one engineering firm, uh, talked about the drone video.
Oh, yeah.
Is that still coming or...
We haven't.
Wait, we, do we, do we have that? Do, do we have the Phil Walseth drone, drone video? No, we don't have it yet.
Okay, well, we're still pursuing it, so. We haven't forgotten it. Okay.
I had, but...
Okay. I'll keep reminding.
There's gonna be a present back in use that, uh, taught, so we, we have to...
Okay, thank you.
He had, when we talked to him, he said he had like a forty-five minute version, a twenty-minute version and a five-minute version. I said, I think five minutes for us would be good.
Okay, anybody else have something? Wayne? Mr. Stone?
Um, don't necessarily wanna get into the details of the salary projections, the, or proposal that was put forth because basically we, the council gave...
We can do that.
Gave the administration a number and they've met that number, so, you know, how they got there, I, I think it'd be splitting hairs. But one item that did come up in a, in a side conversation that I was having is that I believe our, our documented formal pay ranges on, against our job descriptions are currently out of date and out of touch. If we were to look at those documents today, that, that starting wage is nowhere near what we actually offer people as a starting wage. And I think that would probably go a long way to, to helping us get somewhere. And so I guess my proposal would be, I'd, I'd like to see a very detailed review of our salary ranges against our current positions and try and see if we can't bring them up to date with what we're actually offering people.
Good. I'll, uh, let the administration visit with you about that one.
Okay.
Who's next? Anybody down here got anything? Richard?
Uh, I have one question and it's no big deal. Retail Coach, we haven't heard anything about them for a while.
Well, they're done.
That's what I thought, they're done.
We don't have a contract for them.
Okay.
For some time. That, that's why you haven't heard.
All right. I was just wondering, were they still working?
We don't wanna hear from, yeah.
Retail Coach.
Okay. Rick?
No.
Okay. So, very good, thank you. Let's move on to resolutions. Uh, resolution thirty-three sixteen is a resolution authorizing the demolition of the old city warehouse. Yay, yay. And, uh, Councilman Stone, would you please present resolution thirty-three sixteen for consideration?
Soon as I get to the language, Mr. Mayor.
I'll give you little comments on that until, until he gets there. It's well under budget. Um, the rock, the sandstone and the brick is going to be left on site and we are not removing the slab of the building. This is basically everything from the ground up is going to be moved with the rock and the, with the sandstone and the brick remaining on site.
How about that old round saw?
We're not touching that.
Leave it alone.
The bee hive?
Yeah. I didn't know what you called it.
No, we're not gonna touch that.
And so basically, the property will just go unused?
Yes.
After that point?
What's our plans to...
And then if a, a use is found for the property, then we'll have to locate additional demolition work or whoever wishes to purchase the property, let them worry about it?
Correct.
Is that kind of a thought?
What's our plans to maintain it after we evacuate it and tear everything down?
We should probably start with reading it first.
Yeah, let's present it and then we can discuss it. Thank you.
All right. I make a, uh, let's see, resolution number thirty-three sixteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with JTL Landscaping LLC of Florissant, Missouri for the old city warehouse demolition project and establishing effective date. I make a motion to adopt resolution thirty-three sixteen at this council meeting.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in second to adopt resolution thirty-three sixteen. It's open for discussion or question.
Following the scope of this demolition project, what will be required to maintain that property? Anything?
Nothing additional than we're gonna be doing now. I mean, there's, if there's still some grass and some weeds and we have to mow once in a while, but we have two of the buildings up there rented out and we may pursue some, on, some of the other buildings up there, maybe we, we may look at some in-house demolition once the crews get freed up a little bit, but there's very little maintenance that's been required in that property.
So, uh, have we used this company before?
No.
No. I was just noticing the difference in the bids that were, must've been sleeping or, uh... Never mind.
Well, I, I have the same question. I mean, they're twenty thousand less than the, than the, to cheat the next one up. Is that, is that, is this one hundred percent a hard bid?
Yes.
That's all I care about.
Very good. Now, any further discussion? I'll call for the question. All those in favor of adopting thirty-three sixteen, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good. Yes is have it, thank you. So, move forward with that. I apologize, Jeff, I didn't see that you're already scheduled for this next one too.
No problem.
I think you can handle it. Resolution number thirty-three seventeen is a resolution authorizing, uh, us to apply for funds, uh, under an alternative transportation grant, uh, from MoDOT, uh, for, uh, improvements along Collier to Westminster Avenue, or, excuse me, along Westminster Avenue from Collier to the south. Uh, Jeff, would you, excuse me, Councilman Stone, would you please present resolution thirty-three seventeen?
Resolution number thirty-three seventeen, a resolution of support by the, is that the right wording? Okay. Resolution of support by the city council of the city of Fulton, Missouri to apply for the business fifty-four, Collier to Westminster Avenue improvements project under the transportation alternative funds program of the Missouri Department of Transportation. I make a motion to adopt resolution number thirty-three seventeen at tonight's council meeting.
Second. Very good, thank you. I have a motion in the second to adopt thirty-three seventeen. Uh, is there any further discussion of the motion?
Just double checking, resolution of support, is that the correct verbiage?
It, it, it says the council is supporting the application and it's just not Kyle and me going out on our own saying, let's go for a grant.
I understand, it's just different language used many times before, so I thought it'd just double check.
And Kyle, Kyle's final number is the fif, uh, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred, approximate number, is that right?
Yes.
That would be our twenty-five percent?
No.
No.
It'd be twenty-five percent of that.
Okay.
Hundred and thirty-five, forty thousand.
Okay. You have no other, uh, questions or comments, uh?
I, I've got one more, I think. The, is it curbs and sidewalks up through there or is that what you're, is that what it's saying?
Right, right now, there is no sidewalks in this section or curb and, and ninety-five percent of it is, is two lanes, so it'll be taking it, uh, from two lanes to three lanes like it is south of there. Uh, be decorative lighting, curb and gutter, stormwater, sidewalk.
Sidewalks along on both sides?
Sidewalks on both sides.
Okay, that was my, that was my biggest question.
Hugely appreciated by Ward Two.
What's that?
Curbs and sidewalks on both sides between Westminster and Collier is hugely appreciated by my constituents.
Yeah.
There's a missing section right there.
Yep.
Okay. Question, all those in favor of adopting resolution thirty-three seventeen, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Yes is have it, uh, resolution thirty-three seventeen, we've given our support. Resolution number thirty-three eighteen is a, uh, resolution which, uh, supports or, uh, informs the public that proposition D will be on the November sixth ballot. Uh, Councilman Simmons, would you please, uh, present resolution thirty-three eighteen?
Resolution number thirty-three eighteen, a resolution of the city of Fulton, Missouri informing city voters that proposition D will be on the November sixth, two thousand eighteen statewide ballot. I make a motion that we approve this resolution to inform the cities, or to inform the citizens of Prop D.
Second. Very good, thank you. I have a motion in the second to, uh, adopt, uh, resolution thirty-three eighteen. Is any further discussion in motion?
Second.
We actually have a second? Okay, never mind.
If people do have questions, I have a whole bunch of information on it, so I could probably answer it.
Here ain't no further discussion?
I do have just one quick one, just one quick one. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Um, in all reality, we start off lower than two hundred thousand dollars a year for what the city would be receiving, correct? Because it starts off at two and a half cents, then two and a half and, not till it hits the full ten cents, is that correct?
Correct.
Right, it says when it's fully implemented.
Wouldn't that, no. Okay. Okay. Might also add, the county eventually gets to about eight hundred thousand, but they get a pretty good chunk out of this also.
Yeah, it'll be like twenty, twenty-two before we get to a hundred percent.
Sure. Okay.
And I'd just like to say out loud that this resolution is providing information to the citizens. It is in no way endorsing the ballot measure whatsoever from the city council.
Okay. Very good. Now, any further discussion? And all those in favor of adopting resolution thirty-three eighteen, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Yes is have it. Resolution thirty-three eighteen is adopted. We'll now move on to ordinances. First reading ordinances. Uh, Councilman Sheverdecker, would you please present, uh, bill number fifteen fourteen, which is an ordinance having to do with rezoning that we heard earlier, uh, and, uh, for consideration.
Yes, sir. Bill number fifteen fourteen, an ordinance reclassifying under the zoning ordinance certain land in the city of Fulton, Missouri known as seven eleven and seven fifteen Nickel Street and establishing an effective date. I make a motion, we advance bill number fifteen fourteen to our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in second to, uh, advance bill number fifteen fourteen. Any further discussion or questions on this mo, on this motion?
Um, Dennis Helton's is going to read the, the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
After some discussion, motion was offered by Ken McSwain and segmented by Les Hudson to approve the zoning request made for these tracts of land to recommend passage by the city council. Roll call vote of members of the commission was followed. Mike Ible, yes. Les Hudson, yes. Pat Kelly, yes. Ken McSwain, yes. Joan Barry Morris, yes. Ronald Danny, yes. Louis Beatty, yes. Motion was carried with seven members of the commission voting in favor and one member of Washington absent.
And we don't have to hear from the Historic Preservation?
We do not.
Okay.
Planning and zoning has to hear from the Historic Preservation.
But it was presented to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Yes, it was.
So you all know that. Uh, with a recommendation, again, to the... So you all know that. Uh, with a recommendation, again, to the, to reconsider. Okay. Is there any further discussion of fifteen fourteen? Hearing none, all those in favor advancing bill number fifteen fourteen, please say five saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Yes is have it. Uh, bill number fifteen fourteen advances for second reading, next meeting. We'll now consider bill number fifteen fifteen, which is an ordinance that has to do with, uh, speed, lowering speed limits along Old Jefferson City Road. Councilman Moore, would you please present bill number fifteen fifteen, about the idling?
Bill number fifteen fifteen, an ordinance amendment, section one ten, two forty-eight, speed limit, paragraph two of the code of the city of Fulton, Missouri by adding Old Jeff City Road from Coates and Dezen Road to seven hundred and fifty feet southwest of the First Assembly of God, six oh five of Old Jeffus City Road. Establishing this section of roadway as a school zone and establishing effective date. I move this for rescheduled council meeting.
Second. Very good. Thank you. I have a motion second to advance fifteen fifteen. Is there any further discussion or questions on that motion? Or on the bill? Hearing done, all those, uh, in favor advancing bill number fifteen fifteen, please say five saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Bill number fifteen fifteen advances second reading, next meeting.
Quick question, Mr. Mayor, that I just thought of. Is there any concerns about Chestnut Street? Do we need to, does the traffic department need to look at any part of Chestnut to also be designated as a school zone?
I think it's far enough away.
I'd say with being across traffic with a, with a corner, it would, it would not be required with.
Especially if you're going seven hundred and fifty.
Far down Old Jeff City Road, the school zone was gonna go, and if it's gonna go past Chestnut, the intersection of Chestnut, I didn't know if Chestnut needed to be.
Just seven hundred and fifty feet.
Okay.
That's right there, the stop light, or the, or stop sign, and we'll just.
Back to the school.
Does it go north on Old Jeff, does the school zone?
The north side of the school zone is at the stop sign of Old Jeff City Road. So the southwest side of it is seven hundred and fifty feet, um, south of the school. So, uh, Chestnut was never expressed as a, as an issue. And with that, with that stop sign right there at that intersection, I don't think it's a problem.
Okay.
Very good, thank you, Colin. We'll move on to bill number fifteen sixteen, which is an ordinance that has to do with executing a contract between the city and the county, uh, for public emergency communication operations for two thousand nineteen. Councilman Vaughn, would you please present, by title only, bill number fifteen sixteen?
Bill number fifteen sixteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to execute an agreement with Callaway County, Missouri for emergency communication operation for the city of Fulton for the year two thousand nineteen. I make a motion to place fifteen sixty for second reading at the next scheduled meeting.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion in second to advance bill number fifteen sixteen. Any questions on the ordinance or on the motion?
Um, didn't the, didn't the state levy a, uh, fee?
A non-levy fee for second?
So, but we don't get that. That goes directly to the EOC, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
It goes to the county.
It goes to the county.
We don't know.
Okay.
Uh, very good. Anybody else? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor of advancing bill number fifteen sixteen, please say five saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Yes is have it. Bill number fifteen sixteen advances second reading, next meeting. Very good. Uh, I'm gonna jump back in announcements here. This meeting that, that, that we need to schedule tomorrow, uh, you want it similar to the last one that begins, what, five-ish? Or five-thirty and goes to what we've done? And it doesn't make any difference what day of the week. I'm not hearing any. Okay.
Maybe not Friday. Friday would be the only day, potentially.
Very good, thank you. Under, uh, under announcements, again, next meeting will be October twenty-third. And Mr. Moore, I will not be here, so, uh, I will be out of town, so hopefully you will be.
They behaved quite well while you was gone last time, sir.
And, uh, Fulton Stream Team is going to be hosting the annual stream clean event on October the twenty-eighth.
I'm also gonna note, we, um, had on our agenda last time that we would invite Nancy Lewis to our next council meeting so she could get her historic designation plaque. Tuesday nights don't work for her, but she is gonna be at the next historic preservation meeting next week. Um, and I believe that's the sixteenth. So you all are welcome to come to that meeting if you wanna see her get her, um, plaque. Feel free to, to join us that day.
Is that a one P M. meeting?
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
I do not have a need for an executive session, and, uh, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Very good, thank you. I have a second.
That was Councilman Shilin, yes.
All those in favor, please say five saying yay.
Yay.
Very good, thank you.